Welcome. I call this regular scheduled Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Before we start, would you please silence all your electronic devices before we get started? And again, welcome to each and every one of you. We have the Leadership Council here with us this morning. Welcome to you all. I don't know what you're gonna learn, but it'll be interesting. It'll be interesting on that. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Here.
Chairman Leiner.
Here. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attorney?
Lord, in a complicated world, it is comforting to know that we can come to you for answers. Shine bright your light of wisdom and direction for our Board of County Commissioners and all county employees. The job of governing is in no way easy or simple, but you have gifted them for this moment, and you walk beside them, come what may. It is an amazing gift to know we are not alone in these days. Thank you, Lord, that we have you and that you have given us one another as we walk this path. May we strive to be encouraging, useful, and kind today. We pray this in the mighty name of Jesus.
Amen. Okay. Up on the list is approved agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we remove items number four and number seven from the agenda.
Okay. If it's all right for the motion for approved, we have a request to remove items four and seven. Is that all right?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items four and seven will be deleted. Next on the addition -- agenda is petitions of citizens. Before we start that, I've asked the attorney to give us a brief rundown of our procedures and policy on the petitions of citizens.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As the Board knows, some years ago, the Board adopted rules of procedure governing various unsungary things, dealing with the conduct of meetings, voting, and the like. There is a specific rule on public comments, Rule 10. And if I may get into the details, basically, speakers must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the Board. Mr. Chairman, under your rules of procedure, it is your prerogative to control the public speaking and to enforce these rules. A speaker's right is to appeal any decision you make to the full Board, and the Board can vote on whether to support the chairman or let the comment go. So I hope that's the summary you were looking for. If I can answer any questions from your Board, I'll be glad to do so.
Sure, that's good. Questions for attorney? Okay. We're going to public petitions of citizens.
Bonita Simmons?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I have did my due diligence, as the attorney has suggested, as we give our information to you by letter flyers. I have also submitted a CD to you all. Commissioner McCabe, I saw him when he came and said, "What's this?" And it is just my way to let you all know who I am, what I do, but at the same time, I just wanted to give you all, I stand here to give you all, a gently reminder of a saved date. On April the 6th, my organization, Tribe by Fire Incorporated, will be having a black and white gala as we prepare to open up a home for women coming out of prison. I have spoken with some of you individually. I have spoken with you collectively, reminding you and bringing awareness to this growing need. And the reason why I'm here today is just to ask for your support on April the 6th. Thank you all.
Thank you.
What time is it? What time was that?
It is at 5:00.
Okay. And where is it?
Sir?
Where?
It's at the J. H. Murphy Center. I have submitted flyers. You all should have it in your box. If not, I will be more than happy to submit some to the clerk.
Yeah, 'cause I don't have it.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Catherine Smith?
Well, in light of your tabling the two items on the agenda this morning, I don't know that the comments that I'm going to make would be...
Ma'am, thank you, ma'am. Give your name and address, please.
Catherine Smith, New Bern, 2900 Bryces Creek Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
Certainly. I don't know that my comments this morning would be germane. If you would like me to proceed?
Go ahead, ma'am.
For over 25 years, I was your lead animal control officer here in Craven County, and I retired in 2011. I was also North Carolina's Animal Control Officer of the Year in 2010, past Board Member of the North Carolina Animal Rabies Control Association, past President of the North Carolina Humane Federation, a founding member of the Craven County Humane Society, which is now known as Colonial Capital, and I'm the current Team Leader for North and South Carolina, Georgia, and Louisiana for Small Paws Rescue, which is the largest rescue of its kind in the country. Around 2009, 2010, during my tenure, the requests for staff, supplies, educational opportunities began to involve more people, more forms, it took longer, and was much less productive. The atmosphere towards animal control, animal sheltering progressively changed, and it was evident that, on a governmental level, animal control, animal sheltering was not important. However, my direct supervisor, Ray Silverthorne, had always been immensely supportive of my efforts and the efforts of our department. Ms. Green came to you with a long history of success in animal services as a shelter fixer or an agent of change. She and Colonial Capital got the people and the animals of Craven County through Hurricane Florence and on the path to becoming a stellar operation in a mere six months. Her sudden dismissal supports my opinion and experience that revolts from ineffective leadership and guidance. Craven County Animal Services will remain ineffective and problematic until the underlying issues have been addressed. In closing, there are those of us here today who would like to see Mrs. Green reinstated and given the support denied her predecessors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Ray Griffin?
Amen. God bless you. Thank you for that prayer this morning, brother. You're right on target. Amen. Ray Griffin, Bassford, North Carolina, 1981 Streets Ferry Road. We need more prayers of the saints. I've been in New Bern all my life, mostly worked with PD for a while, and never seen such changes I'm seeing in the world, even in New Bern, North Carolina, today. In this world today, it's exactly seen and conceived that a multitude of souls are running straight to destruction. There's a madness in America of mankind. They're simply today called evil good. Many are being deceived and are marching straight towards socialism. The social agenda simply states, eat, drink, be merry, air it, steal it, marry it, get it any way you can. But as Americans, we need to guard against this spreading contagious disease that is killing America. There are many false prophets and high authorities. They are treacherous, both to God and to man, for they murder the unborn and the souls of men. They deceive and teach a fake, a false way of life, a way which does not lead nor teach the truth. Many follow these and to the tune of Hollywood, and they are continually taking away our rights, preaching the half-truth and destroying people's lives. They have removed hell from the vocabulary. They put on appearance of godly values but come in sheep's clothing. All the end of the day are raven wolves. They deceive and say there is no God. They have taken God out of our schools and our churches and workplaces and replaced it with violence and destruction, and replaced the Ten Commandments with policeman in the hallways in our schools. We're living in a day of deception. America today is playing with fire. We've seen all the destruction that is going on, all the things that are happening. We need to look around us and see what's going on. And sadly, we got a party, we got Muslims in our congressional system now that are professing democratic way of life, now anti-Semitism. Yes, sir?
Please do not refer to anyone.
I'm not referring to anyone.
You use some titles and some names out there. It's not necessary for us. We have no control over that. If you want to talk in generalities, please do not use religious beliefs, religious names, or parties.
You can't outlose religious names or parties?
It's going against what we set up to do.
Going against the Bible also?
The Bible, we're not, you're not here to preach to us. You're here to give us concerns in this county that we have control over.
Yeah.
We do not have control over those issues.
We do not, but they are controlling us.
We do not have those controls.
Okay.
If you would like to speak on issues that you started out with, when you got into naming, you're going against what we want to set up.
Okay.
We're not calling out folks in this community. We are a tight-knit community. We have all types of religious folks here, and I think we're united. We have our own beliefs. If you want to preach to DC, you need to go to DC.
Okay. Can we say that we're not united?
No, we're not. You can say that.
Okay.
You can say that.
Huh?
You can say that.
Okay. Okay. Can I say that we're not united, even in our congressional system, that the Bible says that we're in different directions?
You can say that as long as you put out no parties or no religious organizations.
Okay, but we are divided in our system here, even Craven County, we're divided. We know that. So I can say that as long as I don't use the word Democrat or Muslim.
Yep. Or any other religious belief.
Or any other religious belief. So what do I have to do? Can I say we're playing with fire in America?
Yep.
Okay. Can I continue on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In Craven County, I love this county to death, but we're all playing with fire. We've taken out the Ten Commandments. We see our schools are being devastated. I just talked with a lady in the fifth grade, a young girl that could not even tell time. She could not read her, well, she could read a watch and digital time, but far as time, 10, 15 minutes, she did not know how to do this. And this is our school system. This is where we're going. We're not learning like we should be. We're not being presented the facts like we were 20, 30 years ago. Our kids are being brought up in a totally different world. Technology is killing us. We see, I'd like you to come right in here, no cell phones. We're living in a quicker world today. In Craven County, we need to get back to the basics of learning. We need to put, is it bad to say the Ten Commandments back into our school? Is that wrong? We need to put them back into our schools. And there is a thing, we can do it. We have the new law that was created some years ago that says we can put the Ten Commandments, as we did right out here, back into our school system and do something to help Craven County, to further it, to make it so these guys don't have to get out and work so hard every day. We have, what, four homicides in Craven County already this year? When I worked with PD, we were lucky to have one. We are a changing system, and we need to change back to getting back to the basics of God. And we need to get back and help somebody instead of hurting them. Amen?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that ends the number of people that signed up to speak.
Okay. Moving on. Consent agenda, we have a consent agenda the minute of the February 18th. Tax releases and refunds. Military family of the quarter resolution. North Carolina proclamation. Mr. Jason, how you pronounce that?
Envirathon.
Envirathon, thank you. Proclamation. Adopted records, retention and disposition schedule, and emergency service budget amendment, putting funding in there for search backpack.
So movement.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Leiner.
Yes. Next on the agenda, auditors' presentation, Robbie Bittner, RSM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board?
Thank you.
I know that you have been accustomed to a older gentleman with whiter hair than I have that's been up here for many years. I know at a meeting this past year, we came up and Lou presented that he was retiring. So Mr. Cannon has retired and is enjoying retirement as a local citizen here in New Bern. So certainly appreciate it. But first, I'd like to start by saying thank you for allowing us to continue to serve Craven County. We really do appreciate the opportunity, and we do enjoy working with the county. I want to say thank you to Craig and his team. What we do is fairly invasive. It can cause some disruption in the normal course of business, but they do an excellent job of taking their time out of their busy days to, you know, accommodate our requests for information and that sort of thing. So we really do appreciate that. So we have a presentation here this morning. You were presented with what we call our AUC 260 letter, or what used to be known as SAS 114. A presentation this morning will cover all of the major portions of this communication. So in this, here, there are a few minute details, but be glad to answer any questions at any time on it. So to get started, the minimum basic requirements for your financial statements as a government for CAFR requires the management discussion analysis, which is sort of a brief, broad level overview. And then you have your government-wide financial statements, which is the next section in your CAFR, which is more, again, broad, high-level aggregated information. Then you get into your fund financial statements, which is much more detailed down to the nitty gritty and what's happening within the county. Then you have your notes to the financial statements. Those sort of elaborate on the information that's provided in those government-wide financial statements. And then you have required supplementary information. This is information that's specifically required by the GASB or the Government Accounting Standards Board related to, mostly to your pension programs, everything from the local government employees' retirement system to your OPEP plans. So I'll start off with, one of the biggest things that happened in this past year is the county was required to implement GASB Statement Number 75. GASB Statement 75 required that the county recognize 100% of its other post-employment benefits liability. This, while this had no effect on like the general fund or the governmental fund statements, you'll see that it did have a over $9 million reduction in the net position of the county. So while this is not a cash hit, this is just fully recognizing something that had previously been reported just in the notes to the financial statements. Onto the more important things. As auditors, we can provide four different types of opinions. We can have an adverse opinion. Adverse opinion means that we believe that your financial statements are not fairly presented in accordance with GAAP. We can disclaim an opinion where we actually render no opinion. We can issue a qualified or modified opinion, which means that we believe that your financial statements are fairly presented except for maybe one small section. And then we can also issue an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest level assurance we can provide. And I'm happy to say the county did receive an unmodified opinion on their financial statements this year. So we'll go through just a couple of highlights of the financial results for the year. Yes, sir.
Can we follow you in this pamphlet we were handed?
It's, we're going through, the pamphlet is just, is much more detailed. We're really just going by the presentation that's up here, sir. So I can, I'll be glad to point out anything else from there, certainly. So as county as a whole, general fund revenues, obviously, your property taxes are your highest portion of your general fund revenues, followed by your charges for services and then sales tax. This is just sort of shows you the growth. You can see that each year, we've had, you've had some minor growth in those areas, which just kind of goes to show pretty good management of what's happening with the funds of the county. As tax rate as a whole, and this comparison here is compared to your peer counties in the state. Now, the information's obviously as of June 30, 2017, that we're comparing to, since the June 30, 18, the information's not available. But you see, Craven County's tax rate is lower than its peer group, and it's lower than the statewide average. This next slide sort of shows the general tax collection percentages. As you can see, the trend has been pretty good over the past several years, getting up to the well over 99%. And as you'll see on the next slide, that's better than your counties of a similar size, as well as better than the state as a whole. So overall, you're doing a very good job on tax collections. Next slide breaks down the expenditures. The highest portion of expenditures in the general, for the government and the general fund is education, followed by social services, and then public safety. And you can see, this is just a five-year comparison of those same revenues that were broken down. Not a whole lot of growth in the education, but it looks like social services have decreased, whereas health and public safety have sort of maintained from where they are. Next slide is the overall fund balance of the general fund. You can see, for a few years there, it was not really growing very much, and now, in the past two years, it has jumped up to $37.1 million in fund balance. This is a breakdown of the fund balance. We have GASB 54 established different levels of fund balance, the first area being non-spendable. So you have about $34,000 in prepaid, and then the next highest level is restricted, which is either restricted by legislation or restricted by outside third party. And according to North Carolina General Statutes and their stabilization by state statute, there's about $7.6 million restricted. And then the unassigned fund balance resulted in about $29.3 million. So that's the vast bulk of your fund balance from the general fund. You'll see this next slide sort of shows that our, or that your fund balance as a percentage of net general fund expenditures, it's higher than your peer group but lower than the statewide average. This is just showing that your, what you have available in fund balance covers this percentage of what your standard expenditures are each year. So if you were to collect no taxes and have no revenues, then you would still be able to cover over 28% of your budgeted expenses. This kind of concludes what's on the slides. Next, just talk a little bit more about this particular report here. So in addition to presenting our report in accordance with generally accepted accounting, generally accepted auditing standards, we also have to present a report on government, in accordance with government auditing standards, as well as the Uniform Guidance and the Single Audit Act, the State Single Audit Act, which is specific governmental requirements. So our report on government auditing standards is required to report either instances of fraud, noncompliance with grants, contracts, or laws and regulations, as well as deficiencies in internal control that we identified during the course of our audit. This year, and let me take a step back and describe internal control deficiencies. There are three levels of internal control deficiency. You have a material weakness, which is the most severe, which we believe that that weakness either has caused or could cause a material misstatement in the financial statements. You have a significant deficiency, while not as severe as a material weakness, it still warrants the attention by those charged with governance, so it still warrants the attention of the Board. As well as, then we have a, what's called a control deficiency, and that's just the lowest level of controlled, of internal control deficiency. These items are not required to be reported in our report under government auditing standards. However, we do issue a management letter noting those small items out there. That management letter is included in your packet here as, I believe it's Attachment A. So Appendix A in this letter. So this year, we had, we reported three material weaknesses in internal control in the Internal Control and Financial Report, as well as one significant deficiency in internal control over compliance in the report to, in the report over compliance in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. So I'd be glad to describe those if you'd like, or we can go through them. Okay. So first, first internal control deficiency, material weakness was related to the preparation of the scheduled expenditures of federal awards. There were some material errors in there. How have they been fixed at this point? The second one was related to the recording of grant revenues for reimbursable grants. And the third was related to recording of transfers at the airport. And I will also say that the grant, recognition of grant revenues was also at the airport as well. So both of those items related specifically to the Coastal Carolina Regional Airport. But as they're reported as part of your CAFR, we're required to report those here as well. The, I'm happy to say that your report on compliance in accordance with Uniform Guidance, as well as State Single Audit Act, we also issued what we consider an unmodified opinion. So we believe that the, you did comply in all material respects with the laws, regulations, and of the Uniform Guidance and the State Single Audit Act. And we, like I said, we did have one significant deficiency related to, excuse me, the 1571 reporting process, which was a repeat finding from last year's CAFR reporting. So lastly, just to point out, a few more items in this document here is our, any recorded audit adjustments and unrecorded misstatements. All of the adjustments that we recorded or that are listed in the unrecorded misstatements are related to the findings that were reported in the, in the CAFR, as well as the two deficiencies noted in the management letter. So again, I'd like to say thank you. We do appreciate it. And I would like to say, you know, this year was a little bit more difficult, given the timing of certain weather events and between our scheduling as well as the scheduling here. So I know we're a little bit later than we would like to be. But again, I commend Craig and his team for really working with us to make sure that we get it right and that, you know, getting everything that the county has otherwise to do prepared in a timely manner. So be glad to take any questions at any point in time.
Any questions from the Board? I have one. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Could you have the finance officer explain the two findings from the airport, what that entailed?
I'm sorry to hear.
The two findings from the airport, on what that entailed?
One of the findings related, is related to the transfers, the recording of them in the project fund. It was recorded as a transfer out, or an expenditure, I'm sorry, expenditure in the airport in one of the project funds. And in the other, in the operating fund, it was a transfer end. And so the transfer ends and outs have to mesh between funds. So it's really just a reclassification. So, it's really just a reclassification issue, reporting issue.
Coming from them to you, or? How did, how did you get involved with it? I mean, did they send you that report, or?
Yes. The airport has, you know, we provide the accounting services for the airports. These transactions are provided to us from the airport staff. We review them before they go into the book. The controls that we're, we're trying to strengthen within our department is to kind of review those a little bit closer as they come in.
Any further questions?
You mentioned one, I'm sorry. You mentioned one was a reclassification issue. The second one?
The second one, I'm gonna let Robbie.
I'll be glad to describe it. So, the airport has several federal grant programs, known as the Airport Improvement Program, items that are paid on a reimbursement basis. The GASB specifically requires that if you have met all the requirements for the grant expenditures, other than reimbursement or requesting reimbursement itself, that you would go ahead and recognize that revenue in accordance with the matching principles to match the expenses and the revenues at the same time. And the airport had not recorded the revenues for several grant programs where the money had been expended in an approved grant program, it just had not yet been requested for reimbursement.
So, there's no money missing?
There is no money missing, no ma'am. At least, we did not find any money missing, put it that way. I can't, I can't say for certainty that there's no money missing, but we, there's no-
There's no evidence that there's any money missing.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
This is a reclassification issue.
Yes, this would, this would be a timing issue. Had this revenue, had this revenue not been recorded in the current year, it, they would have picked it up in a reimbursement in the next year.
Mr. Chairman, you made the comment that with the DSS 1571 reimbursement, that it is a repeat of last year?
It's, the 1571 reimburse, it's not the reimbursement was the issue. It is related to our 1571 testing, as the state defines it. One particular portion of that is related to EPICs, which is the enterprise, basically the fraud control for people that have, have fraudulently received benefits, either through Medicaid, food stamps, or anything of that nature. And it's really a procedural thing where there is a limited amount of time that the state allows for when something is recognized to when the first action is taken. And while the number was less than last year's number of items that were not addressed in that timeline, because we had the finding in the previous year, and it still had not been fully alleviated, we were required to report that a second time.
Is this something, I mean, I know we addressed it, but what, what kind of procedures have been outlined to DSS to correct that, so it doesn't happen again?
Right. So, I think what Robbie's getting at is, there's a large volume of these transactions, for a better word. And what happens is, someone may miss a step, basically, in the process. So, what we have is, we've hired over the years, people who sort of look over the shoulder more often than they used to, right? So, we have kind of a trainer on staff. And we, because of staff turnover at times, you'll get some newer folks, and that, they need to spend more time, so you miss it over here. So, it's really a quality and a quantity of person that's doing the transaction that you need. I think DSS has provided some feedback to Robbie, which seemed appropriate to me. Robbie, I don't know how you felt about it.
It, it is, and they, they have been improving on this. It's, when you have a backlog, it takes a while to get it caught up. And I will, I will say that from a dollar threshold, it's not a huge amount of dollars, but from a procedural compliance threshold that the state lays out, that's, last year was a very, was a significantly higher number. We had to report it, because there were still some items this year, we're required to report it again at the same level.
But overall, across the state, we're still probably the best in the state as far as reporting and what we've got lost. Is that not correct?
You, I can't speak to that from the state, from the overall of the state, since, you know, I don't have that information in front of me. However, I do see that the county is improving, and that the amount of dollars that you're talking about is, from, from the county as a whole, is not a material number, so that we would consider it. It's really more of a procedural item that we had to look at, so.
Any other questions? Thank you much, sir.
Thank you.
You're very, very welcome. And if something, if any of you have any individual questions or anything comes up later, please feel free to give me a call, shoot me an email, be, be glad to answer them anytime. And again, we, we thank you, and thank you for allowing us to serve the county.
Craig, you might as well stay here, sir. Next on the agenda, finance, final bond resolution.
Sorry.
Oh, did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry. No, you can go ahead. We'll have Ms. Melanie. I'd rather have Ms. Melanie.
I'll wait.
I'm sorry.
That's fine, no problem. And, I don't like, I do not like, oh, Melanie Ray, Elections Director. I don't like to have to come to you and ask for more money in a year, but unfortunately, if you look at it that way, we do have to have an election for the US Congressional District for the passing of Walter Jones to fill his seat. It is a three-election process, but only one will fall in this fiscal year, the other two will fall in the next fiscal year. So, it being the end of the year, I didn't have money to cover the election that we're required to do. So, before you is the budget amendment for the April 30th special election primary, which we do have primaries in the Libertarian, Democratic, and Republican Parties on April 30. And this is the budget amendment that I am requesting that you have before you.
All right. Have everybody seen the budget request? Anybody have any questions, any comments?
I have a question. So, if this one is $89,000 for this fiscal year, does that mean if there is a second primary runoff, plus the general?
They run about, I'm estimating for each of these special elections to be anywhere between $80,000 to $84,000. The reason this budget amendment is a little bit more is because the request for the ballot art system, which is the ballot on demand, which will pay for itself after a two-year cycle. That is printing ballots on demand. It is wonderful. Now, with security and all North Carolina going paper, we've been paper for, you know, we've always been paper here, except for a few years before I came. There also were using the iVotronics. But with security and all of this stuff, this is a great, great system. We tried it in the 2018 November in One Stop down here, and it's a great system, and I believe will save money, cost, expense, storage, and everything. If you take that $12,000 out of this, that's all I'm asking, because I have a little bit money left in my budget. But yes, roughly, the, an election like this will be right between $80,000 and $84,000.
But I guess, the question I heard coming from the commissioner was, we get to one in April. They don't get to percentages. The next one's gonna happen before July, is that not correct?
The next one is July 9. So, I had to go back and amend my request for fiscal year and add two more elections. One this fiscal year, yes.
We could have a second one in July.
You probably will, yes.
Yeah, and in the primary.
And then in September, then municipality in November, and then primary in March. So, five in a row, yes, sir.
But I need the public to understand that this $80,000 is coming down without any assistance from the state. This is all coming out of your tax dollars. We're getting no funding from the state to help us on this. So, you're looking at approximately $400,000 in the next year.
Yes, sir.
This one, and the other three or so. So, you got $400,000 that's unmandated. It's not really unmandated, but caused some issues and some problems that we've got to come up and fund. So, the budget minimum is out there. I'll receive a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second? Any discussion, any further discussions, any comments? Madam Clerk, we're on call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark? Chairman Lyler?
Yes.
Thank you. Hopefully, I don't have to come again, we won't have another one pulled on us, maybe.
I wouldn't say that too loud.
I know. We, we will do them effectively and accurately here in Craven County, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. All right. Craig, now I think it's your turn, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
At the February 18th, 2019 Board of Meeting Commissioners approved moving forward with the refining, sending of the county's general obligation, Refunding Bond Series 2009. Preliminary estimates at that time projected a savings to the county of approximately $213,588. I'm pleased to report that bank proposals came back better than expected, resulting in final actual savings of $237,803. Additionally, the local government has approved this application at its last meeting. Including it in your agendas are copies of the issuance resolution, the escrow deposit agreement, the bond purchase, and the bond purchase agreement. The final action required of the board today is to adopt the attached resolution, which authorizes the issuance of the refunding bonds and the bond sale by the local government commission to PNC Bank National Association. It authorizes the chairman, the clerk, the county manager, and the finance officer to execute the bonds and the other, and any other related financing documents, and to take all necessary steps to proceed with the sale and issuance of the refunding bond.
I'll make a motion. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Discussions? Any discussions? Madam Clerk, we're on call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyler?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the list, Convention Center selection architect for the Convention Center repairs, Mr. Gene Hodges.
Morning, Board. At the January 22nd, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, the board directed staff to begin working on the repairs at the Convention Center. A request for proposal, an RFP, was issued for the floor slab repair, and Haywood Baker was awarded that project. A request for qualifications, RFQ, was issued for architectural engineering services related to the renovations of the Convention Center. Four firms submitted proposals, and after they were rated by a review panel, which consisted of myself, the facilities director, the assistant convention center director, and the purchasing agent, three firms were invited to come in for interviews. After the interviews, the panel recommends that Oakley Collier architects be selected as the architect for the project. They have demonstrated that they thoroughly understand the scope of the project, and they can meet the deadline as described in the RFQ. Additionally, they have experience designing similar projects based on their work with the Greenville Convention Center, the Rocky Mount Event Center, and other projects. The next step will be negotiating a fee in terms of a contract with the selected firm. As the scope of the renovations and a budget are developed, the finance director will set up a capital project budget, and will include the architect and, and construction costs. So, the request today is for the board to authorize approval of Oakley Collier as the architect for this project, and then authorize the chairman to sign the contract once it has been negotiated and the scope has been spelled out with the firm.
So, is that two motions?
You can do it in one.
One motion. Receive a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Gene, when we talk about the renovations, are we doing any modification? Are we pretty much putting it right back the way it was? What, what's the?
This step is, is what it's gonna take to get it, to get it back open. And what we're looking at, the modifications will be upgrades in carpet, upgrades in, you know, wall coverings, with an eye for possibility of future expansion. So, you want to go with, you want to go as a term that was put, a timeless design, timeless color palette, so that as we're looking at growing, at growing the Convention Center or expanding Convention Center in future years, it'll flow, and it'll have a nice flow to it, and it'll be easy to mesh any new expansions that we wind up doing with the project.
The role of the architect, then, will be to assist in that process of the selection of the items, is that their primary role?
Yes, that will be the role. And to look, again, you've got to have, you've got to have, especially when you're dealing with something as extensive as the carpet in the facility like this, you've got to have a blueprint for how the carpet is actually being laid out, and how it's designed, and what sections need to be covered. So, you've got to have that part of it. You've got to have their expertise and their knowledge of, well, you know, while you've got the walls up four foot, now's a good place to put some new power, to put new power outlets here, or new data outlets here. So, all of that requires a coordination of design and a coordination of, this is a better, they also have a better knowledge of the new materials that are out there. We suggest you go with this material, which is more robust to, if you have another flooding event, you may not have to worry about replacing the carpet next time. Or you may not have to worry about, you know, this other substructure or something, something with the wall coverings that may be more substantial, or may would actually weather, pardon the pun, weather a storm better. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
That answered my question, but a second question, then. I know there was some discussion about, and I, I say discussion, I don't know that it was within our group, but there's been some recommendation, at least, from someone that we would take that back wall of the Convention Center and either eliminate it or make it glass, so that when you're in the Convention Center, you would have a river view. Has that been discussed at all? Is that a load-bearing wall? Is that something we could even consider? Maybe I'm throwing something out there.
Yeah, I, I don't try to practice engineering without a license, but I think that, you know, with, with modern technology and construction, that if that was a path forward that the board wanted to take, that's something that could be accomplished. But I'm in no way, and I cannot explain it now, how that would work.
Gene, I think, I think, Commissioner Booker?
Yeah.
I think what you would be doing today is if you hire this archaic firm, who also has engineers that will be part of the project, we would walk through this, really what is a FEMA process now, right? We've got to put it back for insurance in FEMA like it was.
Yeah.
We're gonna upgrade it so it looks more modern, at the end of the process.
Yeah.
I think there's a phase two, which Gene and I talked about on Friday, which he hasn't really described, which is, how do you protect the facility in the back by adding also space that we can get revenue from? And I think you can expand the plaza, I think you can do some really neat things out there. So, so, sort of see that as phase two. Then I think phase three is, what can you do to make the Convention Center more viable in the market that we're competing in? And that's where I think you accomplish, something about moving walls, and Gene, maybe add an additional breakout space. So, I think if you select the architect today, we would go through several processes, include people who are in the community that use the facility as we move forward. But I think what you need, most importantly, is to get started so we can get open in September, Craig.
Sure, absolutely. That's what we're looking for.
I got it.
Craig? Yes, ma'am.
So, to make sure that I understand what I think you said, okay? This design and this process in this year will be focused on bringing the Convention Center back to a, a modernized and updated version of its former self. However, the design process will likely include engineering or architectural modifications on the back of the engineering to provide better storm protection in years going forward. And at the same time, the design process, because obviously, we're not going to be expanding the Convention Center a year after Florence, I think that's, exactly. But in year three, five, seven, 10, should we decide to expand the Convention Center, that this design from this firm will allow us to move seamlessly into expansion, should that be decided in the years ahead?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, that's what I?
Spot on.
Exactly.
Only thing I would change is the phase one and two, phase two may be sooner than later, okay? Which is the back, because we'll get FEMA mitigation money for that. So, because they won't want to pay future claims, they said, well, let's go ahead and get a project set up to build the breakwater, so to speak, in the back. So, you may actually see that accelerated. It wouldn't be an expansion, we just may benefit of having a better back of the facility.
So, and the breakwater might actually become breakwaters plus usable space?
Leasable space, right.
Yes.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Gene. Okay. Next on the list is the senior Tar Heel legislators alternate, alternate appointment. We have nobody for this, so this is something out there.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on that one?
Yes, sir.
If you would mind. Attachment eight, I received a letter back in February. We currently have a senior Tar Heel legislator, but what legislator, but what they're asking for is a backup, which we've never had. So, we don't have, we've never even had this open for application on your website. So, what I guess we're looking for you today- So what I guess we're looking for you today, we would go ahead and start the process of seeking an application.
Okay.
But if you know people who may be interested, since it's not something we've had before, it may be better to.
Only requirement's got to be over sixty.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the county set up alternate appointment to the Tar Heel, senior Tar Heel legislators.
Second.
And a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, appointments. Let's go through the appointments. Okay, pending is Craven Agent Planning Board. I'm going to sit on that one for right now. Let me see, Craven County Board of Adjustment. Advocate Mark Gatlin wishes to be appointed. Lee K. Allen term expired thirtieth April. He has not called me back, if it's all right with, he's in his first, second term. If I can get back with him, if I'd like to hold that one, see if he wants to be reappointed. Unless anybody has any objections.
No, you can hold back.
This is not Lee K. Allen, Commissioner. This is his son.
Right.
Who's been sitting on the board, who's a banker.
That's a different, that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mark Gatlin, his appointment is for the area around the airport. That would not be Lee K. Allen's spot.
That's a nut sauce, same one, okay.
Two, two different spots.
Two different spots.
All right, then, Mark Gatlin wished to be appointed, and that's your appointment?
Yes.
Okay. Any objections?
Nope.
Any comments? All right, by acclamation, he's appointed. And we'll hold on Lee K. Allen. Thank you, Commissioner Booker. Okay, Highway Seventy Quarter.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that Danny Walsh and Bobby Darden be reappointed.
Have you talked with the mayor?
No, I haven't. I think so, yeah.
Okay. Any comments, any questions? Any objections? Okay, Danny Walsh and Bobby Darden to be appointed to the Highway Seventy Quarter by acclamation. Farmers Relief Fund Board of Trustees, term expiring. Matthew Spirko, Dennis Smith, Keith Morris, Donald Heath, Milton Eldred, Oswald Chance, and Robert Blalock, all wish to be reappointed.
Yes.
And you have applicants, Wesley Griffin seeks to fill vacancy left by Kevin Jones.
I would recommend all their appointments.
Any objections?
Nope.
Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask, Kevin Jones' seat, where, where is that from, you know, Clerk?
I do not.
Is that by Willa Swift Creek?
I think so, yeah.
Have, have, I wonder if their board has passed on this.
Well, this, and this recommendation came from Patty McDaniel.
Patty, okay, so you feel like it has? Okay.
Okay. No objections? All right, by acclamation, they're all appointed, and Wesley Griffin will fill Kevin Jones' Fire Tax Commission, terms expiring. James Uby Smith, Jackie McKinney, Sammy Lilly, Terry Gaskin, Tommy Cowan, and James Klein, all seek reappointments.
Mr. Chairman, I move that all be reappointed.
Okay. Any comments? Any discussions? By acclamation, they're all reappointed. Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, Sarah Scott, Biden East Care appointee, originally appointed March seventeenth, seeks to be reappointed, and that's by, that's, that's a direct, that's by the seat, so no objections, will do by acclamation. Craven County Planning Board, Bruce Heiss, seeking reappointment, first appointed in two thousand and sixteen.
Mr. Chairman, I would reappoint Bruce Heiss.
Any objections? Okay, hearing none, by acclamation, reappointed. Farmers Market Board, term expiring March thirtieth. Donald Heath, first appointed, March two thousand and sixteen.
I have not heard back from him, so I don't know his thoughts.
You want to hold on that one?
Unless somebody up there knows him or.
Mr. Chairman, he, he was an appointee that I, I sought after. Donald Heath is retired farmer, he's also on the Soil and Water Board, and he was our representative from the agriculture community. We've tried to keep somebody in this position for many years that, you know, served, and he hasn't said to me that he didn't want to. What I'd ask is that reappoint him, and if he decides that he don't, then we just bring him back, if it's all right.
There's no objections?
Okay.
Okay. Reappointed, Donald Heath. Local Emergency Planning Committee, one vacancy. James Long is seeking reappointment.
Sure.
Emergency Service requests that he be reappointed.
Mr. Chair, does he have to live in the county? I don't have to live in the county, I'm on the board. He doesn't, he doesn't live in New Bern, I mean, the county.
Patty McDaniel and Stanley Kite are aware of that, and they have recommended him.
Hmm. Manager, what's your?
You take, these positions are based on experience, qualifications, sir. We've, we've debated this over the past, at least ten years. I think the value of the person who, you know, he works in a position, even while he may not live here, his expertise on the council is beneficial. This happens a lot, sir, when we have appointees from the Marine Corps. Some of them actually live in Pamlico or Carteret County, but serve here at Cherry Point, so it's, it's mainly by his skill set, but that's up to the board if you.
I mean, it's good, just that I don't want to let on come behind this, you know, that's why.
Are you happy with it?
Yes.
You agree with it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussions on it?
Yeah.
James Long reappointed by acclamation? Upcoming is Craven County Clean Sweep, Down East Rural Planning Organization, Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, Nursing Home Advisory Committee, and Voluntary Agricultural District are all coming up next month. Take a look at those, appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, we have to go through this one. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. I have three items for the Board's consideration in the agenda packet, and then a fourth item that's a carryover from the work session from a few weeks ago. I would like some guidance from the Board on, but the three items in the agenda packet are all related to properties that the county acquired through tax foreclosure. The first item before you is for final acceptance on an offer to purchase four fifteen Scott Street in New Bern. You tentatively approved a sales price of five thousand dollars at a previous meeting. The taxes and associated cost from the foreclosure were four thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and four cents. The tax value of the parcel was sixteen thousand dollars. The offer was advertised for upset bids, there were no upset bids, and it is our recommendation that the Board approve the final offer in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, sir. Item number two is also a final acceptance for an offer on a parcel over on Riverside Road. It does not have a specific mailing address, but the parcel number is one dash oh seven five dash oh two seven. The bid amount, or the offer amount, is twenty-five hundred dollars. The amount of taxes and the cost of the foreclosure was two thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and nineteen cents. The current tax value is six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. As with the other item, this was advertised for upset bids, and there were no upset bids. Therefore, it's our recommendation that the Board approve the final sale in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number three is also a final acceptance. This one is slightly different in that the parcel was located in the city of Havlock and also had city of Havlock pass due taxes, as is the Board's policy. We let the municipality go first, and the city of Havlock has done what, what they need to do to approve this matter. The bid amount was fifteen thousand dollars. The amount of taxes and foreclosure cost was eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars and one cent, and the tax value is forty thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. This offer was advertised, there were no upset bids, and the city of Havlock has approved the final bid of fifteen thousand dollars, and it is our recommendation that the Board follow suit.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
You know, this property, is it, is there something wrong with it, that it's being made of?
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, talk to the mayor, as a matter of fact, I think it's even gone now. It's just land.
Yeah, I think it was maybe a structure that was damaged in a fire, perhaps, so.
Yeah. Motion and second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, the one item I wanted to bring to the Board's attention is a carryover from the work session from some weeks back. The Board directed me to update and revise the Board's policy on the public comment period. That draft is now available. It has been vetted by the manager and his team. It's my recommendation that when the Board is ready, we actually have a public hearing on the policy at the Board's convenience. So I think the policy, or the process would be to distribute drafts, let the Board vet, comment, review, and then when the Board is, is comfortable with the draft, we should have a public hearing and thereafter take action on adopting the policy or not. And I'm just seeking some guidance from the Board on how y'all want to proceed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Based on my review, along with the staff, it was exactly written as described by the Board. We could go ahead today and call for a public hearing, which would be at our next night meeting in April, and obviously, you may take feedback from the public and make changes after that. So at this point, if you want to go ahead and schedule a public hearing, we could go ahead and do it in April, and then you'd have as much time, you know, as necessary to fix it on the backside.
My suggestion to the Board was go ahead, we'll set, set the public hearing for one April, the nighttime, otherwise, it's not fair to set it at the morning meeting, because you don't have as many people.
Correct.
Right.
Coming in wanting to talk.
Right, right.
So hear their comments, give us time to read it and understand it, but we won't vote on it, we'll just take the comments.
Yes, sir, and I'll make sure that the county manager has a clean copy to distribute ASAP to the Board, and again, the public hearing does not mean you have to take action immediately or at all. Just looking at the schedule, and you folks are fixing to get busy with the budget, did not want it to linger an unnecessary amount of time.
Any discussions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, to move public hearing to the meeting, first meeting in April, which is one April. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, county manager.
Mr. Chairman, county commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be with you this morning. I wanted to cover a couple things. Tuesday night, we'll have our regional NCACC meeting down in Onslow County, which I want to remind you, that's from five to eight. We will be leaving here just before four o'clock, if anybody would like to ride with us, so if you just let us know today before you leave, and we'll make plans to do that, so thank you for that. My favorite time of year, we started the county budget process last week. The staff of the county have been working for probably over a month on submitting their request. It's going to be a tough year. I think we've been clear in our work session, in times I spoke with you individually, there are some revenue issues in the budget that we haven't seen before, particularly looking at storm damage and how that affects the amount of money that the county receives. It was interesting, you just saw the chart and said about fifty percent of the revenue from the county is impacted, right? So that's an important factor for us. Still working with Mr. Antry and Craig on exactly what that loss is, but it's going to be substantial, I think, at least this year. Don't want to steal any thunder, but did want to report, from a staff level, thought the trip to DC was very productive. We certainly got some good news, and one thing I'll comment on for the public is, boy, what a meeting we had with the National Drug Prevention Council and their representative who used to work for the USDA. We have since, we've been back, we've been in communication with her, and continue to work on ways that she can come down and help us achieve some of the programs that we're setting forth with, which you'll see in the budget. I'm really excited about the grant opportunities that are out there that we didn't, we weren't aware of, and how some of that federal money is being actually targeted to counties. So I'll leave it at that. Ms. Chair, if there's any questions from the Board, I'd be happy to address them at this time.
Board have any questions? Any issues?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, commissioners report. Commissioner Booker.
I don't have anything to report.
Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman, I've already shared with the Board, but it wasn't in front of the public when I, we had our work session, just giving an update on our landfill coastal regional solid waste management authority. You give me the opportunity to represent this, this Board on that committee, and we are engaged right at the present time of an expansion of about, right at twelve million dollars in a new sale for our landfill. It was expedited due to the storm, and the amount of storm debris that we've had has come into the landfill. Still, as of date, there are enormous amount of debris that is still being brought in, especially from Carteret County, and it is above the norm in what we see on, on average. A lot of folks there in western Craven County where the landfill is, right, I live about four miles from the landfill, and being calling me, and there's a lot of trucks on the highway at the present time, and I just wanted to give them an update. You're probably going to still see those trucks there until the first of May. I'm being told that we've got to haul about forty thousand tons of drainage and field material into this new sale. They're hauling a lot of it from Martin Marietta down Old Seventy, and also bringing it in from out of the county. So it's a, it's a big project, expensive project, but the Crosma Board does have the revenue to pay for it, and will be paid in full. Also, the last thing I would just report on is also, we just elected a chairman and vice chairman to serve for another term, Mr. Clark Wild from Carteret County, who served as our chairman, and as our vice chairman, Mr. Doug Brinson from Pamlico County. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been a busy three weeks, three to four weeks. I have some of my new appointments since coming on to the Board. I met with the county manager and the executive director for the Eastern Carolina Council of Governments with it, and also attended their board meeting on Tuesday. They are in the process of re, I won't say restructuring, but dealing with some personnel issues to position themselves better to deal with the economic challenges that we will face in eastern North Carolina here in the months ahead, and that looked very promising. I appreciate being appointed to that Board. The county manager and I also met with the Southeastern Council for Economic Development. One of our goals is to get them tied more closely with Fleet Readiness Center, since that is the largest industrial complex in the state of North Carolina with it. And the county manager and I also met with Mr. Thomas Taff, who is the new appointee to the Department of Transportation's Board of Trustees. He is from Greenville, and we want to make sure that he is closely affiliated with, again, with the base and with the airport, and aware of the transportation issues that we face here. I thought the NACO trip was extremely useful. This is the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference in DC. This is the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference in DC. We met with Senators Burr, Senator Tillis, Congressman Butterfield, for about 30 minutes each, as well as with the White House staffers, and paid our respects to Congressman Jones' office. The trip to talk about drug enforcement with the former USDA representative was worth the price of admission. What you don't know, that you don't know is what invariably hurts you, and that was extremely useful. I'm looking forward to following up on that one. For the, I also sit on the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission, new appointees are coming on that from the change of, changing governor. I like that, I believe in new eyes, fresh eyes, fresh blood, and it was encouraging to know that the military spending in the state of North Carolina passed 10 billion this year, so it is steadily increasing. And again, we are refocused on making sure that monies to mitigate storm damage from Florence is obtained via the federal government, and that's more complicated than it sounds. Fort Bragg is obviously Army, but there's some Air Force installations, Seymour Johnson is Air Force, our own base Cherry Point. The base itself is, flood mitigation monies would come out of the Marine Corps, but FRC comes out of the Navy. So we need to be focused on that as we move in the years ahead with it. And finally, one of the highlights of the last three weeks was I went to Bangor Elementary School and read Dr. Seuss to first graders, and if you want something that puts a smile on your face, I highly recommend that in terms of a great Friday morning. So thank you, it's been a busy month.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McKay?
Yes, I guess yesterday I attended a funeral for our lost firefighter chief from Atlantic Beach. This is a picture here, he lost a life skiing, and they had a funeral yesterday at 3:00 at the Silver Sun in Mohegan City, and yeah, different agency from all over the county, King Fire Departments and State Troopers and other officers came in, and it was standing room only, and I had to stand up for an hour and a half. Kind of rough for me, but I made it. And also, also I'd like to thank our sheriff, Chip Hughes, he was grateful enough to let me have some of his staff and some of his inmates from the Newport prison camp to come over and help me clean some of the highways in hollow community. And we met Thursday morning at 9:00, and we picked up approximately 18 bags of garbage on Adam Creek Road on both sides, and I want to thank for that. And also too, this coming Tuesday, we can do it again on Temple Point Road, and we're going to be there at 9:00 and try to pick up the trash on Temple Point Road. And I keep telling people, you know, you need to stop, but you can't stop it. But, you know, only way you can slow it down is if somebody sees someone throwing trash, either cars or trucks, you get their license tags, and return them in, but some people scared to go to court, you know, stuff like that. But you're going to have to stop that. And also, at the funeral also too, Norman Sanders was, he was there. I didn't really speak to him, but I sung his present, he left soon, everybody turned out. But I want to thank sheriff again for helping me doing this, and I'm going to use him. If anybody want to use to pick up trash, I get you to do that. You can't, you can't get a whole lot of inmates, have to get one that have short sentence, and you can't use them, you know, maybe two or three, but I had four, maybe five, so we did all the trash myself, and I was out there with them picking up trash, because on the sign it says the crime count and the sheriff pick up. So it makes me and all y'all look good. Because it's kind of commissioners, it ain't just me, it's all of us. So that's all I have, Mr. Sheriff, it's a present moment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sampson, sir?
Yes, I'd like to say our trip in Washington DC was the greatest experience. I've been up there several times before, and I tell you, rather somewhat surprising, of course, it was bad at first, but then it turned out to be good. And we, I tell you, we weren't on vacation up there, at least I knew I was. And we've been a lot of places and did a lot of things, and our NACO organization, it has grown huge. We had so many commissioners there from other places, it was just heartwarming to see how, what, and what people can do if they work together. And I think we are getting stronger and stronger, and I think we're going to be able to do a better job than we have been doing. I had another greatest experience when I was coming back from Washington DC, I was coming back and the driver, as the driver driving the car, our county manager, assistant county manager, a long sheet of frozen ice hit right in the windshield, right on my side, and I don't see why that windshield didn't burst. It hit so hard, the force that it hit that windshield, an ordinary windshield would have busted. But I know the law is watching over me, because he does that all the time, but this happened so fast, I didn't get a chance to call him, but he was right there anyway. Another thing I'd like to say, in this last storm we had, I'm really proud of how the people worked together, still work together. I see so many people now, though, so many people still out at home, so many people still cleaning up. I know a lot of, a lot of the cities and the counties said, well, pick up the clothes, we don't pick up no more house material, and no more trees, you got to have them sort of length, but people, some people have just start cleaning up. They just got a carpenter, got somebody to help, electrician, or some person that's needed. We are so short of trades, it's a shame, it's a shame. If we just had been able to get our school started and get all these trades, and get people that was able to take these trades and be assistants, we would have been real head of the game, because these trades be off of electrician, carpenters, mechanics, any kind of mechanic, air conditioner, automobile, and it would have been a lot easier, but by not having all these different trades, people had done about run a plumber, electrician down, or either any other building contract, or building person that had the knowledge of doing building. And this, this people just start, some of them just start taking their furniture out of the house, find out you got to need electrician, need an air conditioning person, need furniture person, people are going to your house, and it's just hard to get one, and a lot of them is purging some of the peoples out there in the public. Now, if you're not careful, they'll roll, some of them will roll you quick, but I'm just proud that we are as far ahead as we are, but we still haven't reached the goal yet, getting help to the people to help get their homes straightened out. In fact, mine not even straightened out yet, can't, can't, sometime the contractor promise they're coming by, and sometime some come by and they're going to rob you, and you got to get another contractor to check him out, and, boy, it's a hassle for a lot of people. And some people still out at their homes, don't have anywhere to go. I was telling my wife the other day, or a lady was looking out of a place that was vacant, and I said, well, you can't, you can't stay there, because it's against the law to stay there. See, I got to stay somewhere, but I, that hurt me still, because I don't want to see anyone breaking the law, but they need some help from the laws. The state, the state not really doing everything they can. I know the county is wide open, and the city been wide open, and I just hope the state could get wide open. The federal government need to monitor some of these famous people who coming down to help the people that's in trouble. It's not easy, but it's been a lot better since we got so many of our citizens so concerned about one another that they're working to help each other every way they can. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Sampson. Next chair?
Thank you. Chairman and myself attended an opioid meeting sponsored by the college on Thursday and funded partially by the ABC Board, and it's bringing forth more awareness of the opioid crisis that we have in our county and in the United States, and I think it's a good thing, I think we should have more of this, and there was a very good demonstration by one of our offices of law, who showed some of the examples of what's on the marketplace as far as getting people to the point where they start going to stronger drugs. Secondly, as standing on the border, Highway 70 and 17, we finally have concluded our meetings as far as with the business people and the people in the area of James City and Taverner and that area, and finally have a date of start of June, June of 2020. So there'll be a lot of construction going on, and this will make it safer to travel, and will also help economically in the future. And that's about my report, sir.
Sir, thank you much. But to add to that, Commissioner Mitchell was also with us at the opioid conferences as well on that, and Commissioner Mitchell and myself also attended on Thursday the Military Family at a Quarter by award to the New Bern Chamber. If you haven't been to one, you need to see it, we have great support for our military. Our military provides a lot of service to our community as far as coaches and everything. They're involved, everything we've got a committee on, or anything that we've got a function for, they're involved. Their single marine program is, outshines everyone on that, so we need to thank them. If you didn't hear or haven't read about it, the last EA6 flew out of here last Friday, it's gone, there's no longer any EA6s at Cherry Point squadrons or the planes from there. Over the weekend, I attended the Home and Garden Show at the Mayola Plant. It was well attended, well set up, and large crowds both days. Also attended the library book sale, Friends of the Library Book Sale, which is always a good, good thing, they always have a lot of books and everything on there. By mid-April, maybe earlier, but I'm going by mid-April, the contract will be awarded for the bypass around Havelock. Contract is going, going to make the award, should have been done probably this week, but I think it's going to be more like the mid of April, but that contract is set and ready to be awarded. I'd like to thank members of this board who went to DC. I think we made money. I think we had good showing at all of the offices that we visited. We've gotten good feedback from those offices. I've got a call Friday from Senator Tillis's office, who will have his staff in here tomorrow. I will be meeting with him and their attorney with the Sheriff's Department to talk some issues on law enforcement, equipment and stuff on that, from that side of the house. So we're getting a lot. The manager brought out on the opioid problem, that young lady is offered to come down here, and we're working on issues to get her down here to help us and everything going on that. So I think, I think we made money, we definitely showed our presence and our concerns out there. I think they all heard us and understand, I think, the force, other than, you know, just myself being up there, I think we had the urgency and the need from this board, so I thank each and every one of you for being there. I will attend with you tomorrow night, I will ride with you tomorrow night on that, and let me see.
Are you going? No, I'm going.
Down the road, guys, will you?
Yeah.
I got to say.
Don't forget also, if anybody has gotten tickets or going to get tickets, go to the Aviation Heritage Foundation, it's Friday at 5:00 at the Havelock Tourist and Event Center. That opens for the first time Friday night as well, they opened up their convention center. And, yeah. Bruise and Bites, 3 May. Where's that gonna be at? Have we got a date on that yet? Or the time, or location? But 3 May, keep that date, 3 May, Bruise and Bites will be put on by them as well. Other than that, anybody else on the board?
I just, one thing I left out, I'd just like to say that we was able to go by Congress and Butterfield's office, even though he don't represent the district that I'm in, I just happen to know him, and he had done some work around New Bern, even in Craven County, he helped them out real well in there, and he really listened to us and really was trying to help us to do everything he could, and I sure appreciate it.
Mr. Sampson, thank you very much for that, and I missed not saying that. The board needs to be thankful, and the community needs to be thankful for Commissioner Sampson. He made that approach and that contact where we were able to get in with Congressman Butterfield. He did represent us some years back, he still talks with us, he still listens to us, and he still has a lot of input and everything else. So I'm very appreciative, Mr. Sampson, for doing that, I'm very appreciative for Congressman Butterfield for being there and taking us in there to do that. Any other? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.